That's, that's progress. I see you, Alan.
Here we are. Seven o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting in the board of selection to order. I'm going to ask Selectman Nordeal to lead us in.
My lead is to the United States of America.
America.
To the Republic.
The Republic.
And which is.
My nation. In your hand. Visible.
This world.
Selectman De Souza is unable to join us this evening. Selectman Baker is joining us via Zoom. Selectman Nordeal and Muska are here present. So that's our batting order. First item is going to be approval of the meeting minutes. They're in your packet.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 21st, 2022.
Thank you.
May the second, any corrections?
Oh, yes. There was something. Eight, seven. Um, comment I had made regarding section two, two, related to exterior walls defaced by graffiti, which are not properly surface coated to prevent deterioration is basically short and abbreviated what I had said, but I really, I am against graffiti on walls. I just want to make this clear. I am against graffiti on walls. I'm just not in favor of us making sure that walls are, are surface coated in some way. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, so you are against the graffiti on the wall?
Yes, but I don't think that we should be, we should be policing whether a wall is surface coated to prevent deterioration.
Okay.
That was the only.
Do you want to just strike out from everything from which to the end of that segment?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so let me get in here. You are into. Uh, which paragraph, Charlie? Can you help me with that?
Second from the bottom.
Yeah, second from the bottom.
Okay.
Actually, if you just struck the exterior walls defaced by graffiti, if you just struck that part, then it would be fine.
So, okay, if I take out exterior walls.
Defaced by graffiti.
Okay.
That, it would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was the only correction I saw. I'm sorry, sir.
No, I didn't find the corrections.
Alan, any from you?
No, sir.
All right. The question is to approve the minutes as amended. Any further discussion or corrections? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Al, slow down for my bad.
Was Alan abstaining or?
Oh, he's a yes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Public participation is one of the public's two opportunities to address members of the board. I will first turn anybody who is here present. Please identify yourself by your name and your address, and then I will turn anybody online, if it has been at the end of the meeting. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Hall Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. I've got two quick comments. One, your letter to Mr. John Howden, which is superb idea.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. And number two is the payroll status change forms with the chief and the deputy. They're too small, but it's probably the best we can do today. So I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. I still think they're on your day.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
I want to be on kids' guard. This is simple phrase. What's this coating on walls you put to protect graffiti? What does it do?
I think that's to, to apply something that may be painted outdoors or have a seal coating on it.
What happens if you put graffiti on the top of that and you can take it off?
Uh, I think the, the circumstance would be such so that if you're thinking about, well, maybe like to facing a dugout at the, at Osborne Field, you know, that, that's, that's not even a great example because that is seal coated.
Right, like certain stone you can seal coat it. Cement, stone, you can put a seal coating on it so that it doesn't deteriorate as fast. And I just feel as a board, the comment I had made at the time was that I, I don't think we should be policing that as a board, whether someone puts a seal coating on there, you know, on a, a, a wall that's built of stone or cement. I just didn't feel that that's something that planning and zoning should be police.
Actually, it's going to be the poor building. Oh.
Excuse me, Jason, could you give me that gentleman's name again?
Uh, it's Tom Buckley.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other comments from members in public? Is there anybody here online who would like to address the members of the board? If so, please unmute yourself, identify yourself by name and address and state your business. Okay. Um, so Mr. Anderson referenced there, so the town of East Windsor was mentioned in an article that talked about South Windsor rejecting a Tesla dealership going in to Buckland Avenue in South Windsor, and they stated in part that they didn't want to become like the town of East Windsor. And so I saw that rejection and decided I very much would like them to become like the town of East Windsor, and we have a great automotive industry here. So I invited them to, uh, review our proposed zoning regu- text amendment, and if we can help them find a spot here in Switzer, I would very much like to do that. That, that's, I think, exactly what we should be doing, is approving new and innovative businesses. Um, resignation, we don't have any reappointments. Mr. Osborne has indicated his willingness to be reappointed to the inland wetlands and water course agency for a term expiring September first, twenty twenty-six. I'm going to say something I think is true, and I'm happy to be corrected on it, but I believe he is an original member of the Wetlands Commission dating back to the acceptance of the Clean Water Act in nineteen seventy-three. That is awesome. Uh, so if, if there is a motion to reappoint him, I'm sure that would be favorably considered.
I'm going to reappoint Rick Osborne to the inland wetlands and water course agency as a regular member for a term expiring September first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was talking to him about this last night, and he said he's actually conditioning his acceptance of our reappointment on me bringing scissors to the next Wetlands meeting so he can cut my hair.
Uh, we'll include that in the opening appointment motion.
We're not doing that, though.
I'm, I'm thrilled he's willing to continue to serve.
No, seriously, although, yeah, he's, he's a great asset to the, to the, the commission. He knows where every stream goes and where it comes from and the history of a lot of pieces of property. It's, it's really great to have in there. I'm so glad that he's chosen to serve yet again.
All in favor of the reappointment of Rick Osborne? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, all in favor? Um, we have a new appointment. Sharon Apprea is interested in joining the Arts and Culture Committee. Her application is included. Uh, any questions or comments on that or would entertain a motion?
I'm going to appoint Sharon Apprea to the Arts and Culture Committee as a regular member for a term expiring April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That was all in favor. You guys can spend some of your armpit dollars on broadband.
They have a lot of broadband up here. I just don't have enough any right now.
Um, we have no, nothing new. Agenda item eight A, so we'll move on to agenda item nine A, which is a discussion, uh, a discussion of the proposal for a site restoration plan for two twenty-two and two thirty-two South Main Street. Um, I have a motion that was prepared by staff. Al, do you want to provide any color as this came out of Wetland yesterday?
Yeah, this is like step two, as, as the letter suggested, step two in a, in a prolonged process that the commission has been working on with the assistance of counsel. Um, and so this is to draw up the, the plan after the findings. I think we, we did present those findings to you some time ago, a few ago, I think it was. So, uh, this is to drop the, uh, plans on how to remediate. Uh, and of course, with all the details are in there, so you can read that, but we, uh, the Wetlands Commission did approve it last night and would like you got, uh, the board to, uh, approve it for you to sign.
Forty-something now, I got. Okay. Any question or comments?
How am I coming in? Is it? You know, I'm just wondering, is there, how, how am I sounding? I sound okay?
Yeah, you're sounding good.
Okay.
Was, was this a cost we were incurring first? And then?
You, you mean, is it a reimbursement?
Is a town paying the cost of this first, and then we are seeking?
Uh, this, this is a three level of government project, EPA, E and, uh, yeah, that he's, he's paying it as a means of keeping this civil.
Yep. Okay.
All in favor?
We didn't actually raise the motion, and we.
You're right. I'm sorry. Let me see.
You want me? I'll do it, yeah. Um, I'll move that the inland wetlands and water force agency awards the contractor time bond for the development of the restoration remediation plan for the property located in two, three, two, South Main Street. We need to include the other addresses, too. And two, 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 South Main Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, and formally refers it to the board selection for approval.
Let me just.
Again.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, nine B, discuss the possible ratification, contract term changes for the chief police and deputy chief police as recommended by the police committee. Um, so there is in your packet, the payroll change forms, the motion from the commission, um, with the amount that they're looking to amend the, um, wage rates for both the chief and the deputy. Uh, I, I'll entertain any questions if anybody has them, but it's pretty straightforward.
Oh, why does this come before?
Where the contracting authority for the town? Okay. I'm asking all of it. Yeah. It's a contract.
So I'm a little confused as to how this works. I, I don't remember us discussing this ever, and normally we're the ones that uh, negotiate all contracts. Is this contract open for negotiation, or is this just a one-off ad hoc thing? I don't know. This whole process seems odd to me.
Um, so the contracts are, are what's called evergreen, which means after the initial three-year term that each of them are in, they have an automatic renewal provision in there unless either party within uh, hundred and eighty days, um, seeks to open, they automatically renew. That is not the circumstance that's happening here. Um, this is a recommendation from the commission to increase the wages outside of that, uh, contractual process. I don't, I, I can't say that that's the same or different. Um, it just is what it is.
What percentage does this represent of their, of their wages, their annual salary?
Well, it's about ten.
Yeah, it's about ten.
But I, so I don't understand. Do they get an annual increase in, in their, in their contract?
Yes, two and a quarter percent.
Okay, so they get a two and a quarter percent every year unless somebody intervenes and opens the contract for renegotiation six months in advance or so, right? Um, I, I don't understand what this is, what this is for.
I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't understand why they're getting a ten percent raise above and beyond the annual negotiated contract rate.
The, this is what the commission voted to recommend to us.
Yeah, that's, they did, but I don't know why.
I, I don't have much more for you, Al.
Are we doing this correctly? Is this legal, proper process? I don't, I just, this, it's so out of the blue. I don't, I can't see the audience. Are the chiefs in the audience?
They are not.
Because I'd really like to know why.
Mr. Leach?
Is a merit-based wage increase.
Did you hear that?
Hundred percent? Ten percent?
Yes.
How'd you come up with that number?
When we settled on.
Like, yeah, but what was the reasoning? Why, why is such an extravagant raise?
As I said, it's a merit-based wage increase.
Sure, so what's, what, what's the merit? What, what merited a ten percent increase?
Performance.
What performance?
Performance of the chief and deputy.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't see any detail. I don't see any, I, I'm, I'm just confused why this is happening.
That looks like that's all you're gonna get, man.
Then I can't sort it. Do we want to vote on this now, or do we want to table this or postpone it until the next meeting when we can get together and discuss it?
Um, I mean, I have to agree with Selectman Baker. I was a little caught off bars by the increase, I mean, seven fifty an hour is, it's pretty high, and also being um, new in the fiscal, it's the new fiscal year. I was wondering where all of a sudden this money is coming from. Well, it's obviously in their budget, but, and which we don't have a first, a saying, and I understand that, but I'm just curious as to where the money is coming from. And why it wasn't? I don't know. I, I guess I'm just still with a little caught off guard as well. And I mean, I would be fine postponing it, although Marie was here, and Alan.
My only question would be the same as Sarah's as to, you know, why wasn't this, why wasn't this, um, proposed prior to, you know, people voting on the budget for the, you know, for the town? This, this should have been brought up right before budget time, not as soon as budgets start. That's, that's my only thoughts about it.
So I'm a little concerned. It doesn't, it just seems, you know, I, I hope you can understand my concern, and I think the chief and the, and the deputy chief are excellent administrators of the department and have really built a great department, but, you know, to put it in context, we have merit-based raises for one of our bargaining units, and I don't know, what are they going to get? Like, if they, if they do really well, they're going to get a one percent add or a one and a half percent add? Somewhere in that range, one? That's going to be their merit increase. Um, I don't think we have any bargaining units or any contracts where somebody's getting ten percent, and we have a lot of people that are doing good work. So I guess I just need to see, you know, one, i- is this, are we doing this correctly? Is this the proper process? Two, if we're, you know, if we're going to be asked to, um, approve this, it's not going to be a rubber stamp. I need to know the details behind it. For me, anyway, that's me. Can't approve it like this.
Uh, what, all I would throw out there and say is that this was what was recommended by the commission. They are in control of their own budget. But I hear what you're saying.
If they're in control of their own budget, then why are we being asked to approve it?
Because it's a contract change, and we are the contracting authority in the charter.
Right, so we would negotiate any changes to the contract? Right?
So the police commission by statute is responsible for hiring, firing, promotion, discipline.
General man.
A general man, I think. Per charter, we are the contracting authority, so, um, you probably would make, I don't want to speculate. There, there is, uh, this is a statute versus home rule conversation, so I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to speculate.
Okay, so, and I, and I wouldn't ask you to speculate, but I kind of be curious to know, you know, where we stand. I don't want to make a approval or a disapproval of something that I don't even know if we're doing it right in the first place. And, and two, you know, that, that's a lot of, uh, a, a big jump compared to everybody else. So we need to, you know, know why we're doing it. Like, it can't just be what we decided to. Am I out of line here?
Did you say, are you online?
Yeah. Am I out of line?
No. No, I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. I won't make a motion, I'll tell you that. So Alan wants to make a motion to whatever he wants.
I'm, I'm, I'm not looking to make any motion. It, like, to me, I don't think we should be taking any action on this until we know what we're doing. And if I'm going to, from, from my point of view, I won't rubber stamp anything, so if, uh, if we're going to be asked to um, approve a ten percent raise, I, you know, it has to be more than it was merited. So I won't make a motion. What would I motion on? I don't have any information to motion on at all.
Motion to table the obligation of this in the content, so could you, but I won't.
So somebody, somebody needs to make that motion, or it dies without a motion, and then I can't bring it back.
So is it table or postpone?
Postpone.
Yeah, so I'm making motion, we postpone this item until we can get more detail on the, on the reasoning behind the merit increase of ten percent or, or whatever it is, and also to make sure that we're, uh, following the proper process here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I don't want to micromanage, or I know that this really, this feels like it's not our place, first of all, but I do have to agree with Alan. I'm not going to just sit here and vote for something not knowing the history or for or against.
And I'd like to add to my comments that I'm not saying that it's unmerited, not disagreeing. Uh, I just don't have enough information to make that judgment at this point in time, and I can't just, you know, you said so, so I'm going to kind of thing. Uh, and I hope you understand, it's not, uh, uh, you know, that I'm against giving them a raise. I just feel like that's exorbitant, and we need to know why. If, if we're even supposed to be doing anything about this, maybe we're not even supposed to. I don't know. I don't think anybody really does. But don't ask me to approve it without any information, and, and we don't even know if we're doing it right. So again, it's, it's not against the chief and the assistant chief, or how much money I think they should get. I think the process is, is not there yet, and so we need more detail.
Uh, my only comment would be is I would like to see more information, especially comparative data to, like, our pay compared to similar towns um, with the same size force and maybe years of service, and, you know, what other chiefs and deputy chiefs are, are getting. Maybe we're way behind the eight ball, and that's why their commission bought, not this was warranted, um, but evidence to support that would be nice.
I would just say that you're gonna, it's gonna be hard pressed to find.
I, I know it is, because I already looked. I know, I already looked, and it is difficult, but.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of postponement? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Tax refunds?
Love to approve the tax refunds totaling six hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry, Al.
Aye.
So carry, you need to see. Um, selectmen's reports. I talked about the, um, circumstances around the Tesla ladder last week, so I'll, I'll forego that. I do want to share, we have a brand-new building official, um, who started with us full-time last Thursday. Um, Ken Rich joins us from the town of South Windsor and has previously been the building official in the town of Glassberry. Um, he is off to a fast start because he was our interim for a while, um, and has, uh, already got that department, I believe, all the way up to speed in terms of inspections, and is working on getting them up to speed in terms of plant releases, so um, he's off to a fast start. He's a great fit for the staff, um, and we're really excited to welcome him. On July twenty-fifth, uh, Key Town staff and I met with Advanced CT, which is a statewide economic development partner in towns and cities. During the course of that visit, we discussed strategies that town of East Windsor is using, as well as a number of different parcels that are primed for development that would be aligned with the town's plan of conservation and development. Conversations like these with groups like Advanced CT are beneficial because it keeps the town of East Windsor kind of front in mind with those partners, uh, as they meet with potential businesses that will locate into the region or the state. Um, later, uh, later last week, at my invitation, I visited with the government, uh, government affairs coordinator for Audubon, Connecticut. Um, again, Key Staff and I met with the Audubon representative to discuss areas and opportunities that may be beneficial for open space preservation, as well as potential funding sources and funding requirements that may be available to do that. Uh, future visits are planned and are, are going to happen in the coming weeks, but I have scheduled. Um, on July twenty-eighth, I was happy to attend the monthly senior social at the East Windsor Senior Center. It was another visual reminder of the existing facility located above the proper fire department, and that it is beyond, it's used to seniors in East Windsor. It's one more example of why the community center project on the ballot on November eighth is so important to our town's growth. Um, this past Tuesday, just two nights ago, was National Night Out. I know Charlie was there, too. Um, I, I thought it was a great turnout. Uh, vendors, social service agency representatives, fire departments, the Department of Public Works, and representatives of East Windsor Police Department, all were on hand for a really wonderful night interacting with the community. Who dat band was the entertainment for the night, and the weather held out long enough for folks to enjoy, uh, the waterfront and splash pad. Thanks to everybody who came out, um, and that's all I have. So I'll turn next to Sarah.
Um, I really don't have much more to report this evening. The Economic Development Commission and Board of Assessment Appeals meetings were both canceled. Um, and just a reminder to, uh, registered Republicans and Democrats that there is a party, uh, primary on August ninth, hold lovely open from six AM to eight AM.
Thank you, ma'am. Charlie. Okay, mine's short, too. Um, Board of Education met on July twenty-seven. Um, okay, you're still reporting an end-of-year, uh, financial report for, um, last school year to still be in the, um, black, but there's still unsure of a few bills, um, to come in still. Um, the high school boiler replacement project, um, was covered by that budget as well, so they won't be, um, looking to the town for more money to, um, take care of that, which is good news. And, um, Um, looking to the town for more money to um take care of that, which is good news, and um. Superintendent is still in the hiring process for the next school year, uh, but he reports that they are close to fully staffed for the upcoming school year. Um, and the board approved some new job descriptions um that have been proposed by this superintendent. On August first, Warehouse Point Fire Commission met, um, fire department responded to sixty-six calls. Um, for fire and medical combined, and the fire marshal's office reported completing eighteen inspections in the Warehouse Point section of town. And Jason said I participated in um. National Night Out, too, it's great to see a lot of folks there and participating, all the other. Um, groups in town participating, like BMX and HRC and and so, it was a good, it was a good night, it was nice. Good to see you, that's it. Thank you. Al.
Uh, so the Agricultural Commission uh discussed the, pretty much the commu- community garden. Uh, a number of. Aspects of it, and uh number one being the the future of it, the volunteers for the community garden. Uh, put a lot of their own time and energy and uh resources uh into keeping it up. And they just, a couple of the members wanted to point out that. Um, it's pretty heavy load to keep that going, and they're gonna possibly need some help. One of the things that they were hoping that is that the area that's around the garden, you know. Members are currently, you know, driving a tractor with a bush hog on it. From their own farm over to the community garden and mowing the areas around the garden. And then driving that tractor home, that's, you know, a lot of time and expense, and they're wondering if maybe. While the Department of Public Works is over there mowing the various areas that they mow near there. If they could maybe mow that those few strips, it's uh not a lot there, but um I think it's something we should. Uh, investigate, see if they've got the bandwidth for that. Uh, the other thing that they discussed, uh, which is an ongoing uh thing they're working on, is the restoration grant for the tobacco field on the Colgate Farm. So they're just working on revisions for the RFP, and they're gonna try to get that RFP for uh sent out. Uh, so just see if anybody's interested in clearing that land um for some. Um, compensation or the use of it, or or uh whatever they can strike a deal as. The Conservation Commission. Discussed uh the letter that they had put together that I had read to the Board of Selectment a little while a while ago, uh. Extolling the virtues of basically um preserving some of our farms and forest land before it all gets uh used up. For development of of some sort, uh, so they put that letter uh on a. Trifold brochure that they're gonna make sure gets handed out, and it'll be on Facebook and uh probably in the JI. And just wherever they can get it out to kind of um. Just bring that subject up to more people and and allow the people that uh own property in town. To know that there's a number of different programs that are uh run at the state and federal level. That could help them to conserve their land uh for future generations, including their own families. So um that's going out, they're also discussed the open space funding appropriation that's been proposed for. Uh, the finance meeting in two weeks, I think it is. And then so that pretty much was all of their meeting, last night, Wetlands Commission met there looking at a three. Uh, three lots of division on Scannick Road, they started deliberating on and and uh approved. So that will be going to planning and zoning, and they also discussed the tie and bond contract that we approved last night. I mean, tonight, and that's it, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, public participation was the second opportunity for the public to address the board, um, if you would like to speak, please identify yourself by name and address. Um, we'll start with, a- as we did before, we'll start with anybody who's here present, and I'll turn to anybody who's with us online. Anybody here in the room who would like to address the board, yes, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, Navy Main Street, Probrook. Cashier night out, I will repeat my comment that was on Facebook, that the snack bar food was outstanding.
They do a good job. Any other comments from anybody here present? Is there anybody online who would like to address the board, please identify yourself by name and address? Seeing none, we will have an executive session, we'll include just members of the Board of Selectmen, I.